It's seven o'clock. Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of June 16th, 2020. I'd like to start with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Heck. President.
Morrison.
Present.
Bailey.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Elmore.
Present.
Coniston.
Present.
Cantor.
Present.
President.
Present. At this time, I'd accept a motion for the approval of our June 2nd, 2020 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve the June 2nd minutes.
Second. There has been a motion by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Cantor, for the approval of the June 2nd, 2020 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. This time, it's our first poll public of the evening, and I'd like to remind everyone who is watching us via our streaming that since we are not able to bring and allow the public in at this time due to social distancing concerns, we still welcome any comments you may have, and invite you to please have them to the Clerk of Council. Monday, yeah, Monday by five o'clock, thank you, and those comments will be read into the record. So I, we would certainly encourage you doing that. At this time, standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, Financial Management did meet last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We will meet again next week sometime after six thirty.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy did meet last week, and our minutes were on file. We have several pieces of legislation, and we meet again next Tuesday sometime around six thirty.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday, minutes on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Thank you. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development also met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Terrific. Infrastructure, Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure, Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday, our minutes are on file. We have no drafts of any legislation, and we will meet next Tuesday sometime after six thirty.
Thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back about on Tuesday, six thirty-five.
We'll hold you to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week, our minutes are on file. We'll meet again in the back or out here in front next week sometime after six thirty.
Terrific. Officials' Reports, Mayor Mayger.
Good evening. I'd just like to remind everybody that Income Tax Day is July 15th, and that was changed from April 15th. Also, this is a reminder to everyone watching, if you come to City Hall, you are required to wear a mask when you enter. It's for safety reasons, for you and for all employees. And you never know who you're going to pass on the hall. If you think, well, I'll just run in this one time, it is a safety issue. So we ask that everyone who comes into City Hall is required that you wear a mask. Also, I've been talking with Director Soral from Parks and Rec, and I believe the Whitehall Youth Athletic League is going to try and get some drop-in games, a little bit of league, you know, drop-in league games going on in July. So maybe it'll be some sense important, see if we could even get there. But also, we may have some music in the parks in July, two or three possibly. Just, we will have to remind people to social distance. There will not be passing out of free water or pop, or you pop them, you know, hot dogs. It'll just be that. So we're going to try to do a little bit, as much as we can, in order that we can, you know, bring, you know, a little bit of fun to this different way of doing things now. So, other than that, I think that's all I have for right now. We are still working on the program to reduce backflow, so reach backflow into people's homes. We're still working on that, and trying to come up with a way, equitable way, to which everyone can have a chance of applying for that program. But we should have something out by the end of this month, or the first next month regarding that program and how to apply for that. I do know right now, income tax collection is down more than ten percent. You have to realize that over a year's worth of time, that could be three and a half, four million dollars, probably three and a half million. So, let's keep our fingers crossed that, you know, businesses can get back up, and the city can get the revenue that we need more to serve our citizens as best as possible. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mayor, thank you. City Attorney Michael Bibbins is not with us this evening. City Auditor Dan Miller is not with us this evening. Director of Development and Public Service is not with us this evening. Director of Public Safety is not with us this evening, nor is our Treasurer with us tonight. The following official reports have been filed in the Council Office since our last meeting, and that includes the Mayor's Report to Council for May 2020, the Auditor's Expense Report for May 2020, the Auditor's Bank Report for May 2020, the Auditor's Statement of Cash Position and Report for May 2020, and the Auditor's Review Report for May 2020. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have one item listed this evening, and that is the minutes for the June 4th, 2020 Meeting of the Planning Commission. This time, Ms. Aug, would you please call roll as to whether each member of Council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to our third reading. Ordinance 41-2020, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a purchase and sale agreement and other appropriate documents on behalf of the city to sell approximately .2 acres of parcel 090-005-410 and 090-001-974 to continental real estate where they're designated.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance 041-2020 and move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Ordinance 41-2020 was introduced by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Is there any discussion on the motion? I know we've talked quite a bit about this, it's pretty straightforward. Hearing none, Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 41-2020 has passed. Next, we have ordinance 43-2020, which will be read by title only, with a public hearing scheduled for 7/7/20, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1121 of the 1970 codified ordinance to the City of Whitehall, and as subsequently amended, changing the zoning on property located on East Broad Street, parcel number 090-008-249, from exceptional use District EU to General Commerce District GCD, property owned by Office City.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to continue the legislation to July 7th, please.
Second. Thank you. And this is due to the public hearing, which will be on the 7th, so it needs to be pushed. Is there any discussion on that?
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been continued until July 7th, 2020. Resolution 14-2020, appointing a member to the Board of Directors of the Jefferson Township Whitehall Joint Economic Development District.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce Resolution 14-2020 and move for the adoption.
Second.
Ordinance 41-2020 has been introduced by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Heck. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Resolution number 14-2020 has been adopted. Under second reading this evening, we have ordinance 47-2020, which will be read by title only, with a public hearing set for July 7th of 20, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinance to the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.10(c)(1) to allow Armstrong Development to operate a drive-in window and drive-through facility on the property located at 4720 East May Street, property owned by Sugar Properties. Again, title only. That now brings us to our first readings, and on our first reading this evening, we have got ordinance 49-2020 to affirm the Franklin County Public Health and declaring, asserting that racism is a public health crisis, and the City of Whitehall recognizes and affirms that Black, Brown, and other people of color live every day under the unjust burdens of systematic, cultural, and individual racism, and to set forth appropriate and measurable actions to combat racism in the City of Whitehall so that the community might better serve as a model of inclusiveness and equity in declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance 049-2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Thank you. Ordinance 49-2020 has been introduced for the suspension of all rules by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 49-2020 has been adopted. Ordinance 50-2020, makes a supplement appropriation to the amount of $120,315 from unappropriate monies in the General Fund 101, the building lot, the building and lot maintenance account, 101-950-53300, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 50-2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ordinance 50-2020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, and for suspension of rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Aug.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 50-2020 has been adopted. Next this evening, we have ordinance 51-2020, authorizing the creation of the CARES Act Grant Fund 205, appropriating $25,000 from unappropriate monies in the CARES Act Grant Fund 205 to the CARES Act Grant Expense Account 205.000.50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 51-2020 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
Ordinance 51-2020 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison, and asking for the suspension of rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Morrison. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Ordinance 51-2020 has been adopted. Resolution 16-2020, resolving to approve then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 16-2020 and move for a suspension of rules.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Coniston, introducing Resolution 16-2020 and the move to suspend rules. Any discussion on the motion?
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Coniston. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Resolution 16-2020 has been adopted. We now have Resolution 17-2020, authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept funds from the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 17-2020 and move for the suspension of all the rules, please.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Heck, to introduce Resolution 17-2020 and for the suspension of all rules. Any discussion on this? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Heck. Ms. Aug.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Resolution 17-2020 has been adopted. And our final item this evening is Resolution 18-2020, authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept funds from the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 18-2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore, for the introduction of Resolution 18-2020 and for the suspension of all rules. Any discussion on the motion? The only thing that I would add is this is exact verbiage of the one that was just passed, but the first one is a letter that's going to Michael Sinziano, and this is going to a different entity, therefore the reason for both of the resolutions, in case there's any confusion on that. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Heck. Yes. Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Cantor.
Yes.
Resolution 18-2020 has been adopted. This now brings us to our second poll public of the evening, and as in the first poll public, we do not have anything. And that now brings us to our Community Date Board. I always look to Karen and...
The meals are still going on, right? The meals are still going on.
Thank you, Joanna.
At the church. They did up the time, so it's four to five thirty?
Yes.
Four to five thirty now, and they'll continue going until funds run out, so...
Oh, good. That's great service. Anything else for our Community Date Board? Okay, thank you. And that brings us to Poll Council. Ms. Heck.
First, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody that's tuning in tonight, and I hope everybody's safe.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one comment. I'd like to back up the ordinance 49-20 and just say that it is shocking that we find it necessary in today's society to have to do something like this. Everybody have a good week, and thank you for watching.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We really don't have time to, and I'm sure everybody feels the same way, to discuss everything that's on our minds, but I would just like to say I'd like the whole country to sit back, take a deep breath, and just relax. Right now, it's very tough to process all these social issues, the political issues, and not to mention the health issue that's still out there. These are, this is really a tough time in our country. Like, it's hard to watch the news. It's just like anxiety. It's just craziness. So I just would like for everybody just to take a break and relax, and let's process some of this. When we do move forward on a lot of these issues, let's do it with good thinking, and not just knee-jerk emotional reaction. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Nice comments. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bob, that's great. Thank you. Probably what a lot of people are thinking. Julie, thank you for everything you do. You're always over there. I think you're smiling back there, I'm not sure. You have been such a wonderful person to work with in different areas of the city, and I don't know, just thank you for you. And, you know, right now, the Georgia peach truck is up around here, and I found out that my grandkids love peaches, so of course, went and got a carton of peaches up in Fultonville today at lunchtime. And when I got home, when I got back, I was getting out of the truck, and there were these three little kids playing across the street, and their mom was watching them. And so I said, you guys like peaches? Of course, they were a little taken aback, so I turned to the mom and said, can I give each of them a peach? Absolutely. You know, she's very kind, and so I gave them, gave each one, gave one to the mom. And I guess I'm just, I wish we could get back to that, you know? There was no consideration of any of that, except that this nice old man was giving some young kids peaches, and their mom said yes, and so when I was waiting to come to council tonight, I heard somebody go, hi! And I'm looking around, up in the window, second floor, the little, one of the little kids is waving at me.
Oh, nice.
And you know, that's, that's what it's about. Just, I want to get back to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everybody that's viewing. I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the mayor and administration for passing such an important and historical ordinance today regarding racism as a public health crisis, and yes, Councilperson Morrison, it is, it's a shame that we have to deal, that we are back where we, 1960, '40, I mean, we're back in the same places. We're not on a treadmill. I mean, it's time to get off of the treadmill. I will say that watching something, your mind captures what you see, and it is hard to erase what you see. And I think as a society, out of chaos comes creativity, and I say that because me and my husband and a great-granddaughter took a ride down High Street and looked at all of the beautiful artwork that's down there, out of all the protests, the artists. If you guys haven't seen it, it will, it will do your heart really, really good to see that out of all of this, there is beautiful, beautiful artwork that is downtown, in the short north, on the side streets, right where the Ohio Theater is. It is absolutely beautiful. And if you hadn't had a chance to go visit, just take a ride, I would encourage you to go take a ride because it tells a great story. And I, you know, I know that we're talking about doing artwork here in Whitehall. I would hope that we get a piece of that artwork. It is, it's indicative of the things that are happening in Franklin County. I mean, it's a piece of our history, and my hope is that we are on the right side of history. I know with this piece of legislation that we are on the right side of history. And I want to say something to you, Chris, but Councilperson Rodriguez, all it takes is an act of kindness, one person, and it has a ripple effect. And those kids came back and showed you that, how they felt about what we did. And if we all are just able to exercise just love toward one another, and being kind, and getting back to being kind, there are more people that believe collectively in what we're doing than those that are apart from what is happening. And so I think I take heart in knowing that we have more going for us than we do against us. And I am just very, very proud of being a part of this Whitehall City Council, the administration, and us working together to make Whitehall a better place, that's more inclusive, equity for everybody, and that we will get on the right track. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Ms. Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman, I was watching the news the other day, and they were talking about how they're going to save all those pieces. They haven't decided exactly what they're going to do with them yet, but I can certainly see that maybe being dispersed, or maybe all putting together in some sort of travel.
I was going to say, our high school teacher and artist that helped was down there, Jimmy Hart.